All right, we're ready. I'd like to welcome everybody to the August fourteenth Planning Board meeting. We will do the open meeting law, pursuant to the open meeting law. Any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any media. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. The City Charter, section nine to eighteen mandates that all municipal bodies develop and adopt rules or policy for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which is in short provides for citizen input on Planning Board specific matters at the end of the meeting. There's a sign up sheet that is located in the back of the room. We've got Nina Kruger, the administrative clerk, Craig Salvador with Florida Government TV, Dan Aguirre is not present. Gloria Pacheco?
Present.
Beth Andre?
Present.
Mario Luciola?
Yeah.
Mike Farias?
Present.
And I, John Ferrer, am present as well. Under new business, the first item on the agenda, it's a Form A, application for endorsement of plan believed not to require approval and our plan of land. File number twenty-four dash one five eight six. Owner ICC Investments LLC. Applicant Innovative Investments LLC. Property location, one forty-six Eighteenth Street. Assessors map K dash zero one, lot four two. And I believe that Dan had also made comments on these. You can read them.
Okay. So, the planning department had a couple of comments on this. So, the parcel's located in a Z, a G zoning district. The applicant proposes to subdivide the existing parcel into two conforming lots. Both parcels meet requirements for frontage area and building setbacks in the G district. Therefore, we recommend endorsement.
Okay.
Did you say they met the setbacks?
Yes.
On the top left-hand side, I don't think it does. Like the setback.
Well, there's nothing on the top.
Okay, if you look here.
Lot one, lot two?
If you look here.
Yeah.
Required, and then.
Right. But there's no building on the top.
Right, but it says, the yard here is seven point one versus twelve. The minimum front yard setback, four point five versus ten, one point six versus fifteen.
Mm-hmm. And again, this was already, this was already.
Oh, I don't, there's no, there's a reference to the ZBA? There's a ZBA recorded here, I'm sorry, there's a.
All of them have been approved.
No, 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 not this one.
Not this one, okay.
This one didn't have to go for ZBA because it met all the setbacks. That's what she's told.
Gloria, could you explain exactly what you were talking about? We've got a required frontage of fifty. We've got a minimum size five thousand. We've got a front yard setback of twelve. We've got sides as ten, and then we have a rear of fifteen. And so, there's no, the top lot, there is no identified plan on here.
For lot two.
Lot two's an existing lot, too.
That's, that's already, that's pre-existing, so they don't need to meet that.
Right.
They just need to meet the setback, that sixteen point four.
Correct.
Repeat that, they don't, what is it?
It's already a pre-existing building, so it's already got the setbacks that are, that are there. It's, this one here.
Yeah, so if it has only one point six in the back, I thought that would be an issue.
No, because it's got sixteen.
Sixty or one point six?
I know, but I'm looking over here, sixteen point four setback to the line there.
And here it's one point six, and here it's four point five?
Yeah, one point six here.
Right. Now, that's, that's also, is that a drawn-in easement that's there?
That's a fence, it looks like, that you're pointing to. The one point six, so.
No, because that's Eighteenth Street.
That's the lot to the fence. The one point six is the, is, I believe it's the dimension from the lot line to the fence. That's what the designation of the cross lines are. The only thing that I would say on that is that this is an existing condition, and because of lot one meets the requirement of the size of the lot itself, and there's no building proposed right now, you know.
On any proposed building moving forward, it would have to require.
Yeah, moving forward, that, that lot would have to be.
I don't forget, most of these are used to a various.
Lot one's an issue, but I've gone before the ZBA with this exact issue, and they denied it because there were stairs that were like too close to the front yard. And in here, the engineer did put seven point one, four point five, one point six, so the engineer is not deceiving us.
No, seven point one is the frontage of Eighteenth Street. Then the sixteen four is the frontage, the side, left side frontage, uh, side setback.
Which side?
Okay, that's fine.
That one point four, I think it's to this.
So, it just needs to be twelve there. That's the only dimension that we're looking at, which is the sixteen point four.
Yeah, the sixteen point four is your, is your side setback.
Correct. Because I'll forget, they're all facing Eighteenth Street, not Orchard. So, they're both going this way. And that lot one will have to conform with the setbacks once they propose to put something on there. Do we have any other comments on it? Do I have a motion to approve or not approve? Oh, is there anybody here for, for this particular Form A? Nope. Do I have a motion to approve, or what's the board's?
Yeah, I have a motion, I motion to approve it.
Okay. Motion by Michael, second.
I'll second.
Second by Gloria, all in favor?
No.
No.
Gloria, Beth.
It was Beth.
I mean Beth, I'm sorry.
I voted against.
Yeah, it was right. Okay, so Gloria, I mean Beth, yes. Mike's, Mike made the motion. Beth, second. Roll call, Mario?
Yes.
Gloria?
No.
Gloria's a no. Michael?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Next, number two on the agenda, another Form A, application for endorsement of plan believed not to require approval and our plan of land. File number twenty-seven dash fifteen eighty-seven. Owner, applicant Rodman Omen LLC. Property location, one seventeen and one twenty-five Call Street. Assessors map E dash nine, lots seven and eight.
So, this parcel did go before zoning board of appeals. So, the parcel's located in R eight zoning district. The applicant proposes to subdivide the existing parcel, leaving an existing structure on each in accordance with a relief that was granted by the zoning board of appeals. That relief is in your packets. The granted relief is requested, is referenced on the plan, and there was a condition of no further subdivision in the decision from the ZBA. Therefore, we recommend endorsement of this plan.
Any, any comments by the board? I guess.
I believe this is the one there, the huge transformer at the corner there. Am I correct?
Eighth street. The transformer on what street, like?
Uh, it's actually at the end of, my understanding, let me make sure I get this.
The Star and Bates.
Oh, no, you're looking at the wrong book.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at this. Star and Bates, it'd be okay.
This is Carl.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Oh, okay.
You don't have a large copy of that, do you?
There is in that pa, in that pile.
In this pile here.
Yes.
Which number again is?
The one we're doing right now, five, eight, seven.
Yeah, eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven, eighty-eight, seven. Oh, no, wait, I think I put that over here already.
Eighty-seven, okay, thanks.
Sorry, it turned out to be too small. Not being, but I'll get my.
Lot two.
And they're not, they're, they are not proposing any future subdivisions or development on this?
Yeah, for that parcel of land there on the left?
So, there's, yeah, so there's.
Yeah, the forty-nine point.
So, there's no further subdivision, that's one of the conditions.
That's a weird configuration.
Yeah, it was so that, um, they could have some sort of backyard. That was a complaint by the neighbors, um, that they didn't want this property to be left with no land.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a first.
Yeah.
We were just talking about that, Michael.
Is, I mean, like, again, the, the minimum requirement would be the fifty foot of frontage on Aim Street, and they're keeping at forty-nine point.
Right.
One five. I'm just saying that because if they come back and say, we want a variance, we want to build on that.
They can, but there's no further subdivision.
Okay.
Anyone else? Anyone here for, for Call Street?
Nope.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
You can motion reapprove.
Gloria?
I'll second.
Mario? Second. Roll call, Mario?
Yes.
Gloria?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And I, John Ferrer, vote yes as well. Number three on the agenda, Form A, application, excuse me, for endorsement of plan believed not to require approval and our plan of land. File number twenty-four.
Yep.
Dash one five eight eight. Owner, applicant Rodman Omen LLC. Property location, fifteen Star Street. Assessors map C dash four, lots thirty-seven, thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight.
So, this parcel is located in R eight zoning district. The applicant proposes to subdivide the existing parcel, leaving an existing dwelling and garage on one lot and creating two additional building lots in accordance with the relief that was granted by the zoning board of appeals. The granted relief is referenced on the plan. It's also, should be in your packet. Therefore, stash, recommend endorsement of this plan.
So, we're leaving the existing single family and the garage in the rear.
This is, this was the one I was mentioning just down the road, is the transformer. I didn't know if there was any easements or anything of that to the west of that lot.
Fifty-sixty-four, fifty-one. Five, six, five. It's got, it's got the frontage, it's got the, the square footage. Any questions by the board? Anyone here for, for this Form A?
The Star Street.
Star Street, fifteen Star Street, nope.
No.
Do I have a motion by the board?
I motion to approve.
Motion by Michael?
I second that.
Beth, second. Roll call, Mario?
Yes.
Gloria?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I, John Ferrer, vote yes as well. All right, number four. Form A, application for endorsement of plan believed not to require approval and our plan of land. File number twenty-four dash fifteen eighty-nine. Owner, Leonard and Catherine Freeman. Owner, applicant Toby E. Levine, revocable trust. Property location, three hundred Hemlock Street and six oh three Ray Street. Assessors map R dash thirteen, lots thirty-two, thirty-four, and thirty-six.
This parcel's located in S zoning district. The applicant proposes to subdivide the existing parcel, leaving an existing dwelling on one lot and creating two additional building lots. All parcels meet requirements for frontage area and building setback in the S zoning district. Therefore, we recommend endorsement.
So, quick question on this.
Mm-hmm.
The, um, there's actually two existing buildings. The one on the corner of Ray and Hemlock, and then the one down on Hemlock. Those two, the parcel in between that, they're looking to subdivide that. Are they looking to, it's just one building they're looking for, and that would be in lot parcels here, right? That they're looking to build on? I thought you had just read it was.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Says creating two additional building lots.
So, which, which building lots are we speaking of? Because there's the one all the way to the left, which is, um.
I think they're creating parcel number two.
Yes.
Parcel, yeah, so they're creating parcel number two, but is that for two buildings? Is that what you're saying?
No, you got, there's a building, existing building here.
Yeah, yeah.
Existing single family here, then they're taking this and creating another buildable lot here.
Just one buildable lot?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't see any.
That's probably, it's probably a typo. Says leaving an existing dwelling on one lot and creating two additional building lots. But this is already an existing dwelling, in the same existing dwelling.
Yeah, so they.
So, it probably meant two existing dwellings.
Correct, and one buildable lot.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah, that's the correction that I was trying to get to. Unless they're looking to razz one of these buildings, existing buildings.
I don't believe so, no.
Yeah, I don't think so. I mean, this is, I've seen this house on parcel three, it's relatively new, so I don't think that's the, I don't think that's the case. But the other question I have, if this is an easement that's through here, the sewer easement, it's twenty-two feet in width, and that's between parcel two and parcel three. I don't see a dimension from that easement to parcel one. And so, are we, are they indicating that this parcel, once it's transferred over, will meet the requirements of the frontage?
What do you, what do you see?
The sewer easement is, I believe, only going to be for this one, and, uh, for lot, parcel two and parcel three on the plan.
Okay.
That's what I'm seeing, sewer, because it's part of this parcel, and it's sewer easement for three hundred Hemlock.
So, my question would be is, I don't see a dimension from the twenty-two foot easement going due west to, along parcel two from either here.
So, if they had a dimension on there and it said fifty feet, we would know it'd be, it'd be conforming to.
But that's twenty-two feet, I think that's, that's, but they're readjusting the lot lines. I think that's what that is.
Yeah.
That's the, the existing lot line is going to get abandoned, and then there's one over to the left also that's going to get abandoned, and they kicked them, kicked them over in order to get.
Yeah. I, I would, I mean, I, if this was my plan and I was going to put this down, I would put that dimension on there, showing it. Showing what, you know, that it conforms to what's needed.
Right, because it looks like they're shifting the lot lines.
Yeah.
That's like, they're shifting this way.
Right, they moved this one over, and they moved this one here over.
Yeah.
So that they could get, so it can conform a little better with some setbacks. Sixteen, fifteen.
So, just like the first plan, I like that, that they're going to make use of this land, and I'm, I'm, I'd like to see this subdivision. But have they gone before the ZBA for variance?
No.
Because lot one does not conform, it exceeds twenty-five percent coverage.
But it's pre-existing. If anything, they're actually adding more.
They added more land.
Land to the law.
So, do we have the information when, when this house was built, this single-family home?
The single-family conforms, is this one you're talking to?
Yeah, a parcel one, parcel one. So, when was that home built? There's no evidence on this plan that it conforms by statute. I make a motion to table.
Yeah. I agree with Gloria on that. In the, in the particular case, while they are actually extending that easement line to the east from parcel one to parcel two, making the overall coverage larger.
Larger, right.
But the reality of it is, it might not have been conforming originally. Did they get a variance back then? I don't know. I have no, no clue about when this was built, if it was a variance given to them. And while they're bettering the situation, you still don't know. And then the other thing, too, again, I would, if you're going to, I'm assuming, and this is just an assumption, parcel two is going to be developed upon, and not having at least the shown dimensions from the proposed parcel number two, the frontage, I, I think those, you would want to have those dimensions in there. Because right now, you're just, if we were just to pass this and approve it, they could come back and, and build whatever they want on there, and then it would have to go through setback approval. So, I think there's just stuff that's missing on here that needs to be done.
But this didn't, so this already went to, this didn't go to zoning?
No, it doesn't need to go to zoning. It was found by the zoning code enforcement officer that it doesn't need to zone. No, 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 no. Which is the building inspector, Glenn Hathaway.
Yep.
So, the way that the process works is that if they want to subdivide, they first have to go talk to the building department, see if they need zoning relief. If they don't, they come to us for a Form A. If they do, they go to zoning board first, and then they do a Form A after zoning board.
My only, my point is going to be, if we table this till next month, it's still going to get approved. A two-week, a two-week appeal period, and it's still going to get approved. It'll never make it to, to our next meeting. In two weeks, it'll get approved, and it'll, because it's already been approved.
But, I, I mean, again, maybe you're right, it's pre-existing and it conforms by statute, but there's nothing that you sent us in the emails which showed that this, this, like, I looked up the first one. Yeah, the first one was built in nineteen seventy, so that would not have qualified for that. This one, I did not look up this home. I don't know when this house was built. The chances are it's not before nineteen fifty, or maybe it was, I don't know. So, but we have no information, so I.
I can, I can look that up right now, if that makes a difference to everyone.
But you, like, when I, when these are submitted, usually this language here that, you know, says what year it was built, the, the statute, MGL, et cetera, like, everything is stipulated so that we know that we can stamp and we can approve these plans. And there's nothing here, same thing with the first one.
Oh, she's looking it up now. But like I said, it's an A and R, so we've been through this before, and some parcels that I did.
Do you want to put that to the end and take your, and can you come back to this one? Can you go back to this plan, so that we don't take up anyone else's time?
She's just looking. Give her a minute. Dan's already given another favorable recognition.
The assessors have it, have six oh three Ray Street built in around nineteen fifty-five.
So, I'm just going to read, on this plan, it says zoning requirements. The minimum area is twelve thousand square feet. Minimum lot frontage and width is a hundred feet. The frontage yard is twenty-five, the rear yard is.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, and then the minimum side is fifteen. What I don't have on here is I've got kind of selected areas where dimensions are.
So, our protocol is that they only need to show the dimensions to the lot lines when everything else is pre-existing.
But we have no evidence it's pre-existing. It's a submission to the problem. But the submissions should have all that stipulated.
Yeah, so, so you're, I understand what you're saying. So, for instance, you took the existing lot line, you pushed it over, and you have a dimension that says on, on parcel three, on the upper right-hand corner, it says fifty feet. So, you had a lot line, you pushed it over fifty feet. What I'm saying is that you have minimum requirements here with the zoning, the zoning requirements in here. I, I don't know why you wouldn't at least put those dimensions on here to show that it meets those requirements. Like, I shouldn't have to guess, I, I can, I can.
You're talking about pre-existing properties?
Yeah, I can see the existing fifty feet, and I can guess that, that, you know, parcel, and parcel three, just to the left, is probably another fifty feet, meeting the requirement of the hundred foot, you know what I mean? So, that's what I'm saying, it's like, I, I just think it's missing stuff.
Well, what's, what is the board's opinion as far as how to move forward with this? Again, it's an A and R, that's how it's submitted to us.
It was, it was revised. It was originally, it came in, and then Dan asked for additional setback to be shown on it, and they revised it to Dan's specifications. So.
But when we do this and we go per statute, that they were like grandfathered in, we, we show the evidence that they were grandfathered in.
Why don't we, why don't we make note, a note to moving forward, what we'd like to say? Well, Dan's not here, so, I mean, if that's, if the board is, if the board is looking for some extra information, that's fine. I mean, obviously, Dan, Dan had already reviewed this and revised it, so we don't know to what extent he revised it at, and what, setback square footage or whatever. And again, I have, I've argued some of these before, and, you know, if, when it comes before, it's as an A and R, you know, even if we all rejected it, it's still going to get approved in two weeks.
Personally, I like development, and I like making use of the land, and we're, we have, we're short on housing, so I like some, I'm more in favor of subdivisions than not, but.
A little more info.
But as a planning board member, I cannot in good conscience approve this. And there's nothing here to substantiate it. Whereas if they were to revise a plan, give me the evidence I need, a hundred percent, that's our job, is to stamp these and approve them.
So, I, do I have a motion by any of the board members, either way?
I agree with what Gloria is saying as well, like, it just seems like there are things that are missing here. Um, we can't, I can't in good conscience figure this out for them, you know? I can make a, a simple observation, but this should be on the plan, and, and for us. I, I agree, I think this is, I think this is going to work out, but the reality at the end of the day, it should be on the plan. We should know what the dimensions are.
So, why don't we make a note that, you know, moving forward, we need to, we need to address some of the, the additional information on there. Because, like I said, everybody on, on this board can, can turn it down. It's still going to go, still going to pass.
If you deny the plan, it won't. You'll have to resubmit it with the, with the documentation and evidence that every other person who submits these, you know, puts on the plan.
That's, I can't make a motion, that's up to the board to make a.
Technically, it's not, even if you deny it, it's not denying, it's just not endorsing. So, it, after twenty-one days.
Three weeks.
They can choose to go to the city clerk and have it signed by the city clerk as it meets all zoning requirements based on zoning code enforcement officers' observations.
And the city engineer.
Yes.
Who revised it once.
So, so how can, we've denied these in the past.
Well, you've not endorsed them, and.
But there's, I've, I've signed documentation.
Yes, and people have decided to take that and then revise the plans.
So, maybe you can tell us how we can do that? The process to.
Well, that is up to the property owner, whether they would like to just go forward or whether they would like to take your suggestions.
A couple of months ago, and I was chairing, John was not here, we had an issue with the Jehovah's Witness Church on Eastern Avenue. And Dan was very specific about how he awarded the motion to deny the plan so that they wouldn't automatically go through. And then I had to come in that week to sign documentation, do you recall that?
Yes, I do.
Yes, so maybe you could fill us in on that process again, we can apply the same process here.
So, we wrote a, I wrote a decision for the board on your votes, and then it was reported at the clerk's office, and we don't know how they proceeded after that. They didn't come back to us with a revised plan, so I am not sure if they would have, I, I don't know what the next process is.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we deny this or do not endorse, do not endorse the plan because the, the document, we need documentation that this is by law allowed because it's, you know, it was before the zoning code went into regulation. That's my motion.
And that's specifically for parcel one, because you're looking at the coverage.
Yeah, and I think, I think this is a good idea, I like this idea.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it's not fair to other people who don't get their plans approved because it was built a year too late or a year too early, or even those who were built earlier, but their engineer or their surveyor has all the documentation with the deed references and the easements and everything on the side and the setback. Dan is, I mean, he many times sends plans back because he's missing a setback of, even though it's fifty feet.
Which he did, which he did.
But nonetheless, it's lacking.
And they revised it.
I, I mean, the, the minimum that he should have on here is the, the, the mentions for the frontage. I mean, these are, these are pretty simple things to have on the plan, and I'd have no problem approving it at that point. The only other place that I would question is parcel one, and you're absolutely right. You know, they, there's pervious and impervious space. I'm not sure how they got around it, but to me, it doesn't look like it meets the minimum requirement. But I, you know, again, they might have gotten a variance for this, I don't know. I have no idea.
I think the argument is it's by statute, but nonetheless, there's no verbiage on the plan stipulating and referencing the statute and the year the properties were built, et cetera.
She said this was nineteen fifty-four.
Again, that should be referenced on the plan.
No, I know, I'm just saying-
How can we sign this?
Yeah, they're just missing stuff.
Okay, so our subdivision control law says the pla- um, for, this is for an A and R, planning board approval is not required for the division of land provided that every lot within the tract so divided has frontage on one or more of the following, a public way or a way that the city clerk certifies is maintained and uses public way, a way shown on a plan therefore approved and endorsed in accordance with subdivision control law, a street or way in existence prior to March first nineteen fifty-four and in the opinion of the planning board of sufficient width, grade, et cetera.
Yeah, it's, it's just missing-
So, that nineteen fifty-four, there's, there's no, that, there's no evidence here when that home was built on this plan.
So, that's to, that's if there were two houses on one lot.
But you look at what you just, what you just state, what you just stated is what's missing on the plan. And, and if, if they were to go and fix this plan, I would just recommend to their engineer or surveyor to put on the dimensions and show us how they, uh, comply to the actual zoning requirements. And then two, the other question would be the date of when this parcel one was developed and then what, what was the coverage at that point? And then, you know, were there additions put onto this to, to reduce the amount of permeable area and stuff like pervious area? I don't know, I mean. It's just missing a lot of information.
But the concept is perfect, it's great, take all that land, divide into three buildable homes, that's a great idea.
Yeah, I'm for it, it just, you, uh, but like, at the end of the day, not putting this information down and, and, and saying it doesn't need approval until they actually come with a site plan.
But if, if we're gonna be worried about that, we've gotta look at, say, the next one on Forest Street, which is the same thing.
That one, that one has ZBA.
Correct. This is ZBA approved and does not have the setbacks written on it, on the pre-existing property.
But ZBA approved it, it's not our responsibility.
Yeah, all of the ones that we, we just went through, that we approved, number eighty-seven, number eighty-eight, and number eighty-six have all of the dimension requirements and the zoning requirements associated with it. This just has the zoning requirements, but doesn't have any of the dimensions, you know?
This is what the plan contents need to have based on our subdivision control act.
It's just missing. You can see, like, all of these. Yeah, down perfectly, you know? You need fifty feet, show you exactly-
I'll just read this just so we have it on record. This is section- One, section thirteen hundred of plan contents. The plan submitted shall be suitable for recording at Brussel County Registry of Deeds and shall include at least the following, name and address of the property owner, dates, date scale, locus map, and north arrow, the name, seal, and signature of registered professional land surveyor who prepared the plan, boundaries and dimensions of the entire, uh, original tract if the lots or, or parcels to be recorded are divided from a larger tract. If it is not practical to show the boundaries of the original tract, this is very small, let me boost this up, okay. Original tract on the, uh, plan, the area and frontage or all remaining land shall be stated on the plan. The frontage and area in square feet shall be shown for every land, every lot or parcel, the names, widths, and status, public or private, of all ways abutting, the property shall be shown, proposed lots shall be designated numer- numer- numerically as parcels, parcel one, parcel two, et cetera. Names of owners and assessors plot and lot numbers for the property being divided and abutting, property shall appear on the, on the plan, planning board signature block, and so on. Uh, I think that was it, yep.
Yeah, I mean, it just misses the dimensions. The dimensions are just not on the plan. That's, it's supposed to be-
What is the, what is the board's, I, I can't make a motion, that's up to you folks.
Well, I made a motion not to endorse because there are no references to the statute that allows this to be subdivided.
Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Second by Mike. Roll call, Mario, approval or no approval? You approve? No approval.
You approve, you approve the motion?
I approve the motion, I'm sorry.
You approve the motion.
Okay.
Gloria?
You have to speak a little bit louder.
That's all right. Beth, you approve the motion?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes, I approve the motion.
And I will, yes as well.
Yes on no.
Yes.
Yes on no, right.
Very confusing.
Stop on no, yes on no.
And I, I think that's, cause you simply resolved-
Yeah, just some references you all said.
All the other plans, all the other plans have the information, it's just missing it. Just put it on there.
All right, number five, another Form A, application for endorsement of plan believed not to require approval and our plan of land, file number twenty-four dash fifteen ninety. Owner, Dak Realty Investments LLC, owner, Roadrunner LLC. Applicant Capello Construction, property location eleven seventy and eleven ninety-four New Hall Street. Assessors map D dash ten, lots ten and eleven.
I didn't have that, was that, uh, one of the, um, the ones that you sent out?
Yes, that one wasn't revised.
Oh, that, oh, so that, okay, I didn't, I didn't print this out.
That was the one that didn't need to be revised.
I'm just gonna look at it real quick, man.
So, the parcel-
And what do we have on this one?
So, the parcel is located in R eight zoning district. The applicant proposes to subdivide the existing parcel, leaving an existing structure on a non-conforming parcel, labeled ten A, while also creating a non-conforming parcel designated ten B to be combined with the adjacent parcel in order to eliminate an existing encroachment. Notation on the plan designates parcel ten B as non-buildable. Therefore, staff recommends endorsement of the plan.
I'm lost on this one.
Yeah, so what's, what's-
I'm trying to see if he's, he's moving this.
Can you repeat what you, what you said?
Oh, just-
No, that's not, oh, New Hall.
Can I talk?
New Hall, yes.
Yeah, sorry.
You are, um.
All right, for the record, my name is Peter Salino, I'm a lawyer, five fifty Locust Street in Fall River. I represent D A C Realty, okay? Uh, the reason this plan, sure, the reason the plan's in front of you is to cure a boundary dispute effectively.
Okay, right there.
Okay, so my client owns the structure at eleven seventy New Hall. Mister Capello is the principal of the LLC, he's sitting behind. Through, uh, construction, it's been discovered that eleven ninety-four encroaches on his property by about three point nine feet. So, the fix, from my perspective, to avoid litigation, adverse possession claims, boundary disputes, and that kinda thing, is to create two lots and, if you will, humor the phrase, tack on lot ten B to the eleven ninety-four, uh, property, which cures the encroachment while still keeping lot ten A as depicted in the plan as a conforming lot in the zoning district. So, to draw your attention to the, um, requirements on the R eight zoning table, so the minimum lot area is eight thousand square feet, the proposal would leave twelve thousand six hundred and fifteen square feet. The, uh, frontage required is eighty feet, we'd still have ninety-five. Lot coverage is twenty-five percent, we'd have ten point six. And then, uh, the setbacks are all depicted there, I don't need to read every one to the board. But effectively, parcel A would remain as what is currently constituted as eleven seventy New Hall Street, Fall River. Parcel ten B would be conveyed to the owner, uh, known as Roadrunner LLC. That fixes the problem, avoids the litigation, and cleans up the boundary.
That's what I was gonna say, the only thing I could see is moving the, uh, property line in order to conform.
Correct.
Any questions by any of the board members? Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Pro- motion by Mario, second. Beth, all in favor, Mario?
I, yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Uh, Gloria?
Yes.
And I, John Ferrer, vote yes as well.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Mr. Salino?
Have a nice night.
You as well. That's what I thought it was, was a, just moving the property line. Okay, number six on the agenda, Form A, application for endorsement of plan believed not to require approval and our plan of land, file number twenty-four dash fifteen ninety-one. Owner, applicant, Richard A. Mercurio. Property location fifty-two dash fifty-eight Forest Street. Assessors map G dash six, lot thirty-five.
So, here, the variance has not been recorded. I, I looked at five o'clock today.
That's what I was just looking at.
So, this is what it is, okay. So, parcel is located in an A two zoning district. The applicant proposes to subdivide the existing parcel, leaving an existing structure on each in accordance with relief granted by the zoning board of appeals. The relief, uh, the granted relief is referenced on the plan. Therefore, staff recommends endorsement of the plan.
So, why isn't the variance recorded? It's not referenced on the plan either.
Subject to a special permit granted by his own board of appeals.
Can you check at what time?
Five oh five. Stop recording at four.
So, I'm not on delay.
Sorry, I did my job.
It's all right.
So, Gloria, you're just saying that it wasn't-
Hasn't been recorded, hasn't been recorded.
On the plan, there's no, there's no booking page.
Yeah, okay, okay.
And I checked, but I thought maybe they recorded today or last night.
Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Had to get the plans in and, you know, I'm like, big deal, we'll just type, we'll write it in. I don't know, I, I don't know. So, again, this has a variance, or I'm sure they do, it's just a matter of, they always record it and reference it before we endorse the plan.
Other than that, any other questions on this?
The gist of dividing to non-conforming lots, but, but you needed to have zoning in place for that. And they had, it's not recorded here, it's not recorded electronically for your investigation.
As of today at five oh five, yeah. Cause sometimes, you know, you wanna make the deadline, you're like, it'll, it'll be there by the time you guys review it, you know? So.
So, we would just require that it be stated on, on the plan that it's been recorded.
Because otherwise, it could've been appealed theoretically, yeah.
I know, yeah, yeah. I know, I know, we, it may never get recorded. I, no, I understand. I, I think with that caveat, that's, we would have to, uh, not approve this and wait for that information to be placed on the plan and, and/or recorded where we documented.
So, what is the board's, uh?
Motion?
Motion?
Do we have to ask the audience?
Audience? Anybody here for Forest Street? Now. Do I have a motion?
I motion not to approve.
I second his motion.
Roll call, Mario, do you, uh?
Approve the motion.
Approve the motion. Beth?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Gloria?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
All right, number seven. Form A, application for endorsement of plan believed not to require approval and our plan of land, file number, excuse me, twenty-four dash fifteen ninety-two. Owner, applicant, Thomas Legaults. Property location, seven forty-five Brayton Avenue and two eighty-one Jefferson Street. Assessors map F dash seven, oh seven. Assessors map F dash oh seven, lot nineteen. I'll familiar you with this one. That's a, that one's a no-brainer.
So, the parcel is located in an R four zoning district. The applicant proposes to subdivide the existing parcel, leaving an existing structure on each in accordance with relief granted by zoning board of appeals. The relief is referenced on the plan, therefore, staff recommends endorsement of this plan.
This one here, it's a mechanics, uh, Legault Auto. He's right there on the corner of, uh, Jefferson and Brayton Avenue. Excuse me, and then there's a multi, three-family dwelling right on the corner, which I, I believe he lives in as well. So, I, I think he just separating, uh, the two parcels, uh, in case Don already wanted to do something with the business.
And the, the variance is recorded on section seven, so I think we're good.
Page, evidence recorded. Any questions from the board? Or a motion?
A motion.
Beth makes a motion to approve, second.
I'll second.
Second by Mario. All in favor, Gloria?
Yes.
Mario?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Number eight, receipt of correspondence. Uh, review and discussion of the acceptance of the home for aged people, eleven sixty-eight Highland Avenue for the National Register of Historic Places for Massachusetts Historical Commission.
It's the Adams House.
Okay. Are we just gonna approve, put on file, or?
Yep, so, just a motion to place on file.
Do I have a motion to place the correspondence on file?
Yeah, motion, yes.
Mario?
Yes.
Michael, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Mario? Yes. Gloria?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I, John, vote yes as well. Discussion, discuss a one-year progress update on naming of a memorial for Gene Baptiste LaPage.
So, the ownership of the roadways and the new bridge along Route seventy-nine corridor is still under Mass D O T slash state control. Um, the dedicating slash naming of these areas will be discussed when ownership of these locations is obtained by the city.
Gloria, I know this is your-
Well, I think I would like the renaming, in my opinion, to be on that corridor versus the third street, which had been proposed last year.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
That's, I, so I would, I would, I would like to delay this decision until we can get a spot there, but that's my personal opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of that as well.
I, I agree, I think just renaming third street, it, it doesn't give honor to this individual and two, it does, it is a long and tedious process to get things conveyed from federal to state, back to the city. And, um, but if you're gonna do something, do it right. And if it takes a little bit more time, then, uh, we can reach out to the individuals and let them know. As soon as that happens, then we proceed.
Will it be appropriate if we table? If we table it?
It, this is just a discussion.
This is just for discussion, all right. Well, we can bring it up, uh-
In a few months, follow up, like in-
Three months, four months?
Six months? What do you think, it's probably gonna take a while for D O T, right?
Well, Mike, you, how long is that gonna?
It, 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 it takes a long time.
Maybe next summer, or do you think earlier?
It's kinda out of my pay, pay scale, but no, I'm only kidding.
I'll guess, I'll guess.
Let's go six months.
I would, I would go, yeah, I would go, um, let's go six months, but I will, I will reiterate it within the next week.
It's gonna be tedious and long.
At least six months will keep it on a back burner for us. And we're not gonna forget it a year away. Six months at least will keep it, keep it alive and discussion going. So, do I have a motion to, um, rediscuss the, uh, the renaming of the Gene Baptiste LaPage, uh, memorial?
It'll be in February.
February, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so, Beth makes a motion, second?
I'll second.
Gloria?
Yes. Yes.
Mario, yes. Gloria, yes. Beth, yes. Michael, yes, and I myself, yes. Okay, we have the approval of the minutes of the meeting now. Let's see, these are a little tricky here. First one's gonna be June. I was not here, Michael was not here, so Gloria, you'll have to-
Uh, yeah, so-
So, these were tabled last month due to the fact that Beth was absent, so we didn't have a forum to vote on this one piece, the June twelfth. So, we can do that one.
Can only be Gloria?
I make a motion to accept the June twelfth minutes.
I'll second.
Yes.
Okay, so it's, so it's motion by, uh, by Gloria, second by Mario, favor Beth. So, that's, that one's approved. Okay, now we're gonna go to the July tenth.
Jai was not here.
You're correct. Absent was, was Beth, so do we have a motion from the rest of the members to accept the June tenth?
July, July.
I'm sorry, July tenth, planning board minutes of the meeting.
A motion to accept.
Motion by Mike, second?
I'll second.
And by Gloria? All in favor? Mario?
Yes.
Beth? Oh, no, Mario, Gloria?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Uh, citizens input, we don't have any, I don't believe. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm motion to adjourn.
Motion by Beth, second?
I second.
By Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, as well.